Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
So that's why I'm sitting here and Bob's coming in via Zoom. We need a call to order. Board member roll call. Approval of agenda. Public comment. Approval of minutes of July 14th. Warrants payroll July 22nd. Payroll July 29th. Accounts payable July 22nd. Accountants payable July 23rd. Accounts payable July 29th. Correspondence. Access weight permit. Old business. Executive session. Contract discussion. I'd like to point out that that was an error and it should say, um, contract negotiation. And that is for Cat TV. Action taken from executive session. Solid waste ordinance discussion and next step. Health officer. Emergency radio. Public comment and adjournment. Can I entertain a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. We adopt the agenda with changes.
I would like to.
Bob?
I was just saying, I would like to add a second executive session for legal personnel. Probably no, probably no, uh, uh, no, uh, action coming out of it.
I withdraw my initial motion. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with the changes that Angie and Bob have both made.
Where would you like that?
Seconded. That'd be under 11?
Under 11, Bob?
Uh, yeah, I would think that, uh, do it, uh, you know, back to back on the, on the executive sessions.
Okay, so it'll be 10. All right. Do I have a motion on the table? Do I have a second?
Yes, I seconded it.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, all those in favor, Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian? Angie, aye. Okay, so board call. Board members' roll call. Angie Rowling?
Jamie Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Brian Harris.
Approval of agenda? Oh, we already did that?
Yes.
It went out of order.
Oh, my gosh, you went out of order, so sorry. I am out of practice, sorry. Public comment, any? Please raise your hand.
Or anybody else over there.
And state your full name.
Jim. Hi there, um, Jim Cosus, North Mason Hill Road. Um, number one, I, I, I like to challenge you on your executive session. Um, either whether, either or, the way you put it as a contract or in the contract negotiation, I really do not think this falls into the con, or that situation. And, um, I'm going to ask, because it says in the statute, except for the affirmative vote of two-thirds of the members, so when it comes to the time of you going into executive session, I'd like to have a vote taken to find out who is going into the executive session for this discussion, because I do not think, number one, the public body has made a specific finding that premature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or a person involved at a substantial disadvantage. I think there are contracts out there that can, yes, number one, put people at a disadvantage or an organization like Cat TV, but I do not feel you are following the rules and regulations, and this has happened before in other discussions that you have had concerning executive sessions where you think just because the word "contract" is there in the statute, that it is a legal way to go to exec. This is hiding things from the public. There is no negotiation going on. I think this is purely a discussion. They have given a price. I think they have different options that you can go for, but I do not think you hiding this in executive session from the public is something that needs to happen, and I think we need to just get rid of this games that we're playing with this executive session. This is not the first time, like I've said. And number two, I'm just a little confused on meetings are held the second and third, or second and fourth of the month, is that correct?
Yes.
At seven o'clock?
No.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
We changed it.
Okay, um, unfortunately, I must have missed that, so I appreciate hearing that now. Um, third is that, um, I appreciate being able to, um, get on the Zoom here to see it, because I have a computer, but I just wanted to make it aware that there are a lot of people in panel do that, do not have Zoom, and they do not have computer access at the nights that the meetings are held at six o'clock, and that the only access they do have is cable TV. And through the Cat TV, I think it is very advantageous for the town to have this transparency and open discussion on a Thursday night to, uh, make sure that all people of panel are able to kind of watch what is happening live and be able to come into these public comments. Thank you very much and have a good night.
Moving forward, approval of minutes. Can I entertain a motion?
I will make a, well, I'll make a motion we approve the minutes from the July 14th meeting.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Warrants payroll July 22nd. Payroll July 29th, 2022, for $11,408.93. Can I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Accounts payable July 22nd. Account, you want to do them singly?
That's what we've been doing.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Accounts payable Newtown Office, July 23rd, for $30,503.0.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Accounts payable July 29th, 2022, for $43,721.44.
Make a motion we approve.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. Correspondence? We only had one, no?
Uh, no, because we did it on the health officer.
Okay. Access weight permit, there's none, correct? Any old business?
Nope.
Okay, then we're on to 10. Executive session for contract for Cat TV.
Make a motion, go into executive session for contractual Cat TV.
Can I have a second?
No second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
I think we were giving some language here. Um, can I, can I alter that? Uh, can you, um, or actually maybe, uh, retract the, uh, retract the motion and, and I'll go ahead and make it and read it off here.
Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Can I retract my motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. We enter into executive session, discuss and negotiate our contract with Cat TV as long, as doing so in public session would place the town at a disadvantage. This is allowable under 1 VSA 313. We will be taking action after the session.
Can I have a second, please?
One second.
Any further discussion?
And a vote, please.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. We are going into executive session.
Executive session?
Can I have a second?
Seconded.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. And Lisa, you may start.
Thanks, Angie. Um, I'm just gonna offer, uh, some comments, um, just to let our viewers know, uh, why we think it's important that Cat TV cover the panel board. Uh, thank you for meeting with me and, um, we had a very productive, uh, conversation. So, um, one of the issues that has come up is can we track, uh, the number of viewers, uh, that are on our Comcast channels? And unfortunately, the answer to that is no. Uh, that's proprietary information from Comcast and they won't, uh, give us that. But we can say anecdotally that we know people watch. Uh, we certainly hear about it when, uh, we have technical issues. We can track some of the data on our other platforms, though. So for the last four months, on average, on Facebook, each of the select board meetings had 243 views. Uh, we reached 379 people for each of those videos, and the YouTube channel, uh, had 26 views of each of those meetings on average. Um, so, I, talking about viewership and, and all that, and, uh, you know, the cost of the coverage of these meetings versus, um, the number of viewers, and a lot of people may not know that in 2019, uh, we had to start charging for meetings, uh, because we had some funding threats and, uh, some risk to our future, so we had to really come up with a new business model after 28 years of, uh, covering meetings, uh, at no cost. So this was a real shift for us, and, um, I appreciate having the opportunity to talk to the boards about this, um, and, and making sure that it's, um, our value is understood in the communities. So, but what I'd like to say is I think that, um, some of this is, uh, our service is much more than the cost, and I'd like to just, um, say a couple of things about that. Um, what the, the town is actually paying for is 30 years of trust and experience to ensure that the doors to democracy are open and accessible for all. Um, this is what Cat TV does, is what we've done for 30 years, serving panel, North Bennington, Bennington, Woodford, and Chasbury. It's the foundation of our mission to provide coverage that informs the community, engages citizens, and ensures that there's no hindrance to access to government. Paying for our service encompasses so much more than how many people are watching a particular meeting at any given time. It's about trust and transparency for our elected officials. It's about unedited, unbiased, nonpartisan, gavel-to-gavel coverage that has 30 years of experience and accountability behind it. It's not to say that viewership isn't important. It is, and I think from the stats that I shared, you can see that people are watching the panel meetings on our platforms. Another way to look at this is as a conflict of interest insurance policy for the board, for, as they serve those elected them. Cat TV assumes and takes responsibility and accountability for ensuring that these meetings are covered with the same standards we have for all these years. So the next, uh, concern that I wanted to address was that, uh, the board is already paying for Zoom. They're recording the meetings, they're posting it. Why should they pay Cat TV to do the same thing? And personally, I don't think it's the same thing, and this is why. We offer live, real-time viewing of the meeting for members of the community who are unable to attend in person. We do this on our channel, on our Facebook page, and on our website. Cat TV is panel's only option to have meetings play on local television. Not everyone has access to computers or internet access, but many of the individuals do have basic cable subscriptions, which allows them to watch Cat TV. Cat TV archives the meetings on a dedicated YouTube channel, and we make it available on our video on demand service. We're responsible for ensuring that each meeting is uploaded and accessible for the community. Conflict of interest could arise if the sole is, if the town is solely responsible for reporting the meetings, posting the meetings without a third party involvement. They would have complete control over the content, and that may be called into question by their constituents. It's also to consider, important to consider issues if there are staffing changes, if a meeting is accidentally deleted, if there's questions regarding the integrity of the meeting. Right now, Cat TV assumes all of those responsibilities for the board. Not to mention that the fact that the composition of board changes with each election. So Cat TV has provided consistent, reliable coverage for 30 years regardless of the election results. We've established an audience, and people know where to find important content such as government meetings. I think that we really look forward to continuing the coverage with panel and to making sure that, uh, open government is accessible to all of the citizens in Bennington. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Very much appreciated. Um, I, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things. So the, the board, obviously, uh, is our desire to keep it on Channel 17, or I keep saying 17, but to keep it with Cat TV, it does reach a more, more of an audience. Um, the concern here was, and I think it was a legitimate concern, is that there is a real, uh, a real, uh, risk of, or a, an actual redundancy. Um, Lisa did an excellent job explaining, uh, explaining the value, um, and, and, uh, to me, the biggest value out of, out of this was the conflict of interest statement. That was the primary, and that to me, that's the, the, the biggest value. Um, I, and I did want to also point out that the other value we get is, it is live on 1045, on 1085, it's live on Facebook, it's live on their website, um, and then it's, and then it's archived to YouTube, so you can pull it up and watch it again. And you could also watch it archived on, uh, on everything except, uh, except, uh, except 1085. Uh, you can't pull it up on demand, I don't believe. Um, how, so from a.
This is, Bob, Bob, Lisa, go ahead.
You, uh, it would be accessible on our video on demand service, uh, so you could just click on the listing on our schedule and watch it there, and it also does have several replays in the weeks following, uh, the meeting.
Okay, that, and that's good to, that's good to know.
Thank you.
So I, I think it was a valid concern to say that, are, are we paying for something that we already have? Because it, I think it's very clear that since we went to Zoom, um, the environment has changed, and that's what we needed to clear up. And so, uh, uh, hearing it and discussing it in executive session, um, it became apparent that there was nothing in there that couldn't be an open session, and that's why, uh, that's why we're, uh, we're sort of redundant here and saying these things again.
Yes, thank you. Can I entertain a motion?
Make, make a motion to, uh, have Cat TV redraw the contract if they haven't already done so, for the, do the select board meetings only.
So that's 24?
24 meetings, and then the town hall meeting.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you so much, Lisa, for joining us. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, now we need a motion to go into executive session for.
Were we gonna have a, I, I'm asking the question. Were we gonna have a public comment?
Yeah, I thought we were gonna, yeah.
Okay, we can, but it's not written on our agenda.
Oh, uh, that's true.
I thought it was.
Sorry.
Well, you did it before, we did it before the other public comment, or that one.
Well, I was gonna say, we had discussed before that after executive sessions, we were gonna have a public comment.
So we're gonna open up for, um, public comment. Please raise your hand and state your full name. Hannah?
Jim has his hand up.
Okay.
Hi there, Jim Cosus again. First of all, I appreciate you guys continuing the coverage with the Cat TV. I think it is, um, very important for the town to, um, be able to access it if they don't have computers and things like that. Um, number two is, um, Robert, um, seeing that you are so, um, in front of making sure this was legally, um, discussed for executive session, I'd really like you to send me, send to me, um, number one, because it's, it's something that shouldn't have happened in executive session, um, but the reasoning of going into executive session is after making a specific finding that the mature general public knowledge would clearly place the public body or the person involved at a substantial disadvantage. I don't see anywhere that the public knowledge, um, of knowing what you guys are being charged, I don't, don't shake your head, it's all right, Bob. I mean, I'm a citizen, I'm just asking questions of the legal body of panel, but I think that there was no substantial, specific finding, and I'd really appreciate if you would personally, as the select board, send me that, uh, specific finding which is supposed to be of made prior to executive session that required this to be put in executive session. Um, I appreciate your comments that you said, yes, we wanted to bring this to open discussion and have Lisa discuss. Very good. Second of all, the budget this year put in $6,000 for Cat TV. Actually, it's labeled P E G access TV. I'm not sure what the labeling is called, but I'd just like to know of, what's the reasoning for budgeting $6,000? And then all of a sudden turn around and say, we don't want people to know what's happening at the, um, official time that a meeting is held for the planning commission or any other meeting. What are you gonna do with the extra monies that are budgeted? This is where I'm starting to worry about, what are you guys budgeting for that I have to worry about, that you're just, oh, first budgeting and not spending where it needs to be? So, again, I appreciate having everything on there. Would you like to say something, Bob?
Uh, yes, I would. I wanted, I think we would need to limit the comments to three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you.
And, and second, uh, I appreciate your comments. Um, we don't know, uh, as it turned out in the executive session, uh, there was nothing there that, that couldn't have been in a public session, but you don't know that till you have the conversation.
No, 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 no.
And it was valid. Jim, please don't argue with me, Jim, you don't have the floor.
Okay.
Uh, that's it, that, that's it. They, this was absolutely appropriate for an executive session. That's, that's my last word on it.
All right, thank you, Hannah. Please, thank you. All right. So moving into executive session, again, I need a motion, and this is for, I'm sorry. What was it for? Legal personnel, thank you. Oh, my gosh. It's been a long day for me, people, I'm really sorry.
Make a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
A motion to come out of executive session, please?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Jamie?
You may. Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. There will be no action taken. Solid waste ordinance. Discussion and next step. So, DRB and the planning have both given final okay on it, so hasn't our lawyer, correct? So all you need from us is to adopt it?
Uh, I think, wasn't there, in the response from the lawyer, I think we were to incorporate some of the comments into the text itself. Isn't that true?
So I think he just questioned the, um, outdoor sales piece, uh, and wanted everybody to take a second look at it to see if it should be a separate ordinance or not, just so that.
If I remember correctly, I think he alluded to the, the comments and said, uh, an example of what you're trying to do would be appropriate.
This is for tag sale, correct?
Uh, yes, this is the planning commission's, uh, ordinance for solid waste, which, which talked about the portion.
The comments basically say that this type of business wouldn't be, um, limited by this ordinance. It would, um, it should be going through the existing approval processes in place for zoning and DRB. Those are the notes. So he thinks that we should sort of take those pieces out, um, where the planning commission thought we should leave it in. I guess that's kind of fair.
Him or the DRB? I thought it was the DRB that thought it should be separate.
No, we, we, uh, we did remove the three-day limit. We, we removed that entirely.
Yes.
And then, uh, and then in the comment section, it was something about the, uh, what the intent of this was, is what I thought he said.
Yeah, it's not intended to, to limit entrepreneurial opportunities.
Um, okay. But that's not in the text of the, uh, that's not in the text. I thought he had said something in the email.
No, it's, it's, um.
I'm trying to pull that email.
That he makes next to it, yeah. All right.
Do you have his email in front of you? What day it was? It was a while ago, right?
It was like good two weeks ago, wasn't it? Not longer, but.
And it wasn't from him to the board, it was from you. Sorry, I'm trying to keep this moving.
No, it's just very cold in here.
Seven, 7/11.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Okay, well, here, um, I agree with Bob's comments that it should express what you intend to regulate by this and also provide certain exceptions, such as agricultural farm stand or some other business that is open. Bob's comments are correct, that if there's a real business that does not do this type, then that business should go before the zoning board. Again, Bob's come to support the notion that there may be a separate ordinance on tag sales or other miscellaneous things like that. Uh, I, I thought, uh, it should express what you intend to regulate. I thought that meant that we would make a slight change to it, and I apologize that I haven't done that. Uh, do we wanna, um, no, we wanna, we wanna, uh.
I'm okay with leaving it the way it is. I didn't see any reason to take it out.
Because I mean, we already have stated right in Section 2, purpose, what the purpose of this is. So we already clearly state what the purpose of the ordinance is.
Right.
So, I mean, I don't feel it's necessary to then restate the purpose of it in the middle of it.
Don't need redundancy.
No.
Okay, all right, yeah, Department of Redundancy Department. Okay.
If we, if we feel later on we need to create a separate tag sale ordinance, that's something we can tackle later on.
Okay, I, I, I'm in agreement. I'm sorry, I, I misread his comments. I, I thought he was actually saying that we needed to put that in, because I think that's what I was saying in the comments.
Right. He was agreeing with you, Bob, what we had already changed.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, so my understanding is if you adopt it, then we have two public hearings?
Correct.
Correct. So, are we all set?
I'm good.
Can I entertain a motion to adopt?
Make a motion, we adopt the ordinance as written?
Solid.
The solid waste ordinance?
The solid waste ordinance, sorry.
Seconded. Seconded.
Any further discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody.
And Tara will work on the scheduling aspect of it?
Yes, definitely. Thank you. All right, moving on to health officer. Did everybody receive Fred's email?
Correct.
Yes.
That he is willing to take it back over because his life has changed once again. And I think he did a remarkable job when he was here.
None of us had any complaints about his performance.
None. He did an outstanding job as far as I'm concerned.
And anybody that followed him was gonna have some big shoes to fill.
Yes.
And so my feeling is if Fred is willing to come back and serve, I would absolutely welcome it.
All right.
And we did not reach out to the individuals yet who we who we interviewed, correct?
No, no.
Okay, and then I want to say in public that we really appreciate that they
Applied.
That they applied, appreciate their interest, and and hopefully they'll think of us again if if we need their services and apply again.
Right, and there could be, is it, am I saying it correctly? It could there could be a deputy if he needed help?
I was actually gonna suggest that.
Right, so maybe out of the two applicants, if Fred would like a deputy, we could, you know, appoint one of them as his deputy.
Yeah. Yeah.
Moving on down the road after we speak, if we decide to keep Fred.
Yes.
So somebody needs to make that motion.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I think regardless whoever we pick, I think having a deputy as a backup is a good idea just in general practice.
Because it can be quite time-consuming and overwhelming and a lot of footwork and investigation and sometimes I mean, this is the real world and we're all working. And sometimes you need help.
And we just need to be conscious of the budget, right?
Very conscious of the budget. Yep.
The 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 position itself is a stipend. It's a monthly.
Right.
And I'm not sure how the deputy would work, and I don't want to double up, right?
Right, we have to do some investigation.
That's something
There's a possibility of a deputy. I think only thing we're deciding today is whether or not we're
Right, I'm just saying that's a right, I'm just saying that's an option down the road for the two-bit apply.
Well, technically, the the health board, Board of Health.
Right, he has to take our recommendation.
Right, but you need to vote to recommend him to the state.
Well, do we need to reopen it up for bidding again and do that whole process?
I don't think so, because right now Fred is the is the health officer.
It's not, no. No, Mike is
It was accepted by the Board of Health.
And the board
Okay, so we do have to go back. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and if we can, if we do it tonight, I might be able to get that to them so that it's effective first. If we miss it, it goes to the
Okay.
I make a motion that we offer Fred Miller the health officer position? Or recommend to the state?
There you go. Thank you.
That we reappoint.
Reappoint Fred Miller to health officer.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. So can you get that to the state ASAP? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to emergency radio.
Okay, so as you're all aware, we have the emergency radio up at the old town office. Used mainly, I believe, for communicating with the road crew when they're out plowing and things like that. So when we moved down, it wasn't something that was planned on moving, but we looked into it. We've gotten a couple of different quotes. Hannah's still waiting on a third. We've gotten one for around twenty six and we got one for around thirty one hundred.
So is it moving the equipment that we already have or is it new equipment?
It's outdated. And we would need to update.
So it's updating the equipment, not just moving the equipment.
That's what I want to make sure.
All new and it would be
Yeah, that that was my thought too, because I'm like, that's a little pricey just to move a equipment that I have.
So basically, my question for you guys is, is it something you feel we need here?
Are we required legally to have something like that is my first question.
I'm not sure on legal.
My thought is in the in the world of, you know, cell phones. I mean, how much how much are the guys actually using the radio versus just using their cell phones to coordinate?
Well, I think they're using the radio because Joel just had one put in the truck. So I'm likely to use the radio.
Well, they definitely use the radio back and forth.
Yeah, they do.
For plowing and everything else. And for say someone was in a in a radio area, radio dead area, but they happen to be able to use their cellphone, they could call the town office. Take I'm over the bank on whatever road, then they could radio, hey, you know, so-and-so is over the bank down here. Can you get him some help or do you want me to contact somebody else?
The other piece is we have a pretty big building now. We're a municipality. What if we're ever an emergency gathering location?
Right.
You know, what if things do go south and we have no cellphone service? That radio is pretty pretty valuable at that point.
Okay, do we have money in the budget?
That might be something we should talk to Ellen about first.
The other thing is, is do we have a license for that radio?
That one was outdated.
No.
So no, it's expired.
It's, yeah, but I'm talking about for the frequency that panel uses, or is it a CB-type radio?
That's a definite
See, that's that's the other.
So I I did ask Craig to help. Craig's been Craig got me Craig Waddell got me the second proposal from Bearcom. So I've been talking with him about it. And he thinks it's important as well, so. As I'm not going to seek coordination, that's why I contacted him. I figured that was
That's a good call.
Person to go to.
Yep, I'm thinking that the panel rescue and fire department probably also have that channel.
Right. Right, and then we could have them
We have an emergency.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean.
It just might help us all as a town be you know, have that access to that emergency radio.
The only thing
communicate with each other.
Other thing we'll have to look into is antenna, because if there's an antenna on the outside of that.
Yeah, that's included in the quote.
Because we're gonna have to find out as far as the stanchion, because it's not as far as if you just attach it to this building, anything north of us is going to be limited because of the height of the building versus the height of the other building and, you know, surrounding areas, so.
What do you think? We might need a repeater?
Well, just need to get it up in the air. I mean, we need an antenna tower possibly or something to get it up higher versus just on top of the building or off the off the building.
You don't think this building is taller than our old building? The roof? Oh, I think it is.
Not the way we sat.
Because that's up on a hill. I don't know, though. It's pretty close.
The roof is probably at the base of that building.
Oh, really?
Well, whatever I think whatever's necessary, we can get in a bid. It's just deciding whether that's what we want to do or not before I put in, put the work into a big process.
I think Joel and our emergency coordinator need to take and be chatting on this and our agencies, you know, the rescue squad and the fire department, but Craig's covers the fire department quite a bit.
I would almost there's funding available on the state.
And it could be a homeland security grant if they're able to assist with this.
Because I'm almost worried about there's got to be some kind of funding available for this like under emergency planning and management.
That's why I say through homeland.
And so we're waiting for
Funding, I can look into that stuff, but we just need, do you want me to move forward with?
Invest, do some more investigating.
That's one, yes.
And then start to maybe put out a bid.
She said there's another one coming forward, a third one.
A third one, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think it's well worth moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just don't want
Bob, do you have anything to add?
I don't. I'm in agreement.
Okay.
And I don't think we need to make a motion just to
Just have her do the research. Perfect. Okay. Moving down to public comment. Please raise your hand and state your name.
Hello there, people. I'm sorry to be taking up so much, but I mean, I'm 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 just starting to worry about what we're what direction we're heading on down some of these things. Number one, three things, and hold on, Bob, I'm gonna put my timer on.
Oh, I already did it, Jim.
We already have it, Jim. We can take care of it. This is our meeting, not your meeting, our meeting.
One specific I mean, I still want to know what the specific binding is, so I just don't want that covered up. Number two, Angie, I really loved your line that said, do we have money in the budget for all of this? You've got six thousand in for the Cat TV. Why are you questioning how many broadcasts are in there? Spend the six thousand dollars to keep the people informed, otherwise take it out of the budget.
Jim, you're repeating yourself. Could you please ask us something new?
No, it's all right. This is my public comments.
You've already been on twice.
I can't ask questions. I'm sorry. Number two, I want you to spend the six thousand dollars in Cat TV because it's in the budget, similar to you guys are spending the money for the salary increases because it was in the budget. Number three. I just like to
Just so you know.
Whose decision was it to make sure or allow appliances to be out on public property because it's not in the solid waste? Define to me, what is solid waste? And number two, will your ordinance clean up all the different properties that are on Route seven from Williamson Stores all the way to Bennington? Because there is a lot of mess there. There's junk vehicles. There's overabundance of vehicles on properties that are supposedly garages, repair centers. Everything needs to be cleaned up on Route seven because our reputation is totally going downhill. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Anybody else, Hannah? Nobody? Can I entertain a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. Have a safe night. Good night.
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content.